Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna call the roll. And right now, if everybody had raised their hand and affirmed that they're here. Ken?
Here.
Judy?
Here.
Mike?
Jessica?
Here.
Bob? Okay, we have five members present, and Jessica and Lenny are absent. Okay, so we do have a quorum, so we can proceed. Are we gonna go through the approval of the minutes? We got a big packet of minutes. Let me take a look at those. The first set of minutes that we have to catch up on our approval is from our May 14th meeting. Does anybody have any comments or corrections to add to those minutes?
I had none.
Hearing none, I'll assume those are gonna be fine. Brooke, am I gonna sign off on these for you as we do them? Okay. So we'll just save them for her? Okay. Okay, the next one was for a special meeting on May 28th, and the members present were Chair Jessica Cohen, myself, Commissioner Judy Miles, Ken Serat, and Jessica Wobig. Any changes or corrections that we need to make to that meeting? Okay? We have minutes from our June 11th special meeting, and again, we had six members present, including myself. I have no changes to make. Does anybody else have any comments or changes they'd like to make to the meeting from June 11th? Seeing none, I'll move that one along. And then I've got two copies of June 11th. We won't do that one again. But July 19th, our last meeting, five of us were present for the meeting, and I was one of them, and I have no changes to recommend.
None.
Seeing none, we'll consider them all approved, and I will leave them here on the desk for you.
Now, I know that we're talking about the July 9th meeting, right?
July 19th.
But July 19th is, okay, July 19th was-
Oh, there's a discrepancy.
Was a Saturday. I don't remember being here in a-
Oh, perhaps.
I can correct that date.
It was, is it July 9th?
Yeah, it should be the 9th.
July 9th?
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
And my calendar tells me I was here, and I don't think my name was on the list of attendees.
I'll update that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, sure.
All right. I think we can move on to our business for the evening. We had two projects on the agenda, but the first one has been withdrawn, and so we're just gonna deal with project number 2518, Forest City Academy, the Cedar Hill 2781 Euclid Heights Boulevard. Brooke, would you like to take us through the case, please?
Yes. This is project number 2518, and they're requesting a conditional use permit for a nonprofit elementary school called Forest City Academy and the Heights Theater. The subject property is located on, I'm sorry, on Coventry, on Euclid Heights Boulevard. It's one lot northwest of the Euclid Heights Boulevard and Coventry Road intersection. The lot's about 100 feet wide and about 200 feet deep, and has a total area of about 15,800 square feet. The property is zoned C3 general commercial and is neighbored by more C3 general commercial buildings to its east, a multiple-family three districts to its west and north, and the Euclid Heights Boulevard median zone park to its south. Across the street is another MF3 multiple-family district and the Coventry branch of the Cleveland Heights Public Library, which is zoned A single family. The proposed project seeks to establish a new nonprofit elementary school designed to meet the needs of families in the community seeking a smaller alternative environment for their children. They utilize a mastery-based model inspired by Montessori principles that allow students to progress at their own individual paces. The school anticipates to have about 15 to 20 students and two full-time employees. This is meant to be a temporary location due to its smaller size and lack of traditional physical education space. They are interested in utilizing the Cedar Hill Baptist Church for the following school year. The school day will run from 8:15 a.m. until 3:30 p.m., Mondays through Fridays, and staff will arrive at 7:45 in the morning. Transportation will not be provided by the school. To reduce traffic disruptions, there will be a buffer window between morning drop-offs and the start of classes between 8:00 a.m. and 8:15 a.m. every morning, and another afternoon buffer window between 3:20 p.m. and 3:30 p.m. for pickups and dismissals. Because the school is small and starts prior to most neighboring businesses being open, traffic should be minimized. Many of the prospective students live within walking distance of the location and will likely walk to school regularly. Vehicular pickups can take place in available street parking spaces on Euclid Heights Boulevard and Coventry Road, or parents and guardians can park at the Marx parking lot and walk their child into the building. The area directly in front of the building is a loading zone with spaces for several vehicles. Families can pull into these spaces with hazard lights to walk their children into the building, and they plan to install either indoor or outdoor bike racks at some point. The school will utilize the Coventry Peace Park for outdoor recreation and play. They will carefully walk to the playground while closely monitoring students. They will also have a teacher with a yoga background who can teach basic yoga exercises which can take place inside of the classrooms. Family events and large school gatherings will take place off-campus at community locations such as libraries or parks. The school will only use the building during school hours, so the maximum number of people who will be using the space at any given time is about 25 total between students, teachers, and potential approved visitors and volunteers. And these are the standards under which a conditional use permit can be issued, and this is a section of the code that provides an exception for the provision of off-street parking spaces for new uses and existing buildings that will not result in significant changes in traffic and parking if the property is located in a commercial district. And staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit for a nonprofit elementary school called Forest City Academy and the Heights Theater per code chapters 1111, 1115, 1121, 1151, 1153, and 1161 with the following conditions. This use is to not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity or create a nuisance for adjacent properties. The applicant is to work with city staff to resolve any complaints from neighbors. The applicant is to return to the planning commission to update their conditional use permit if any significant changes are made to the site, location, capacity, or operations. Any signage is to be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Board of Review. The applicant is to adhere to all applicable building code regulations, and all required construction is to be completed within six months of the planning commission approval.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Jessica?
A question regarding existing businesses within the facility adjacent property that have liquor licenses and things of the like. Does an educational use within this location impact the potential reissueance of those certifications to those properties? Like, if someone has to renew their liquor license and they're within 200 feet of an educational property, would that have a negative impact?
Not to my knowledge. I don't believe that it would affect neighboring licenses.
An existing business, I believe, would be allowed to continue forth. I don't think that that would impact it in that way. And the only restaurant I know I can think of that's right there is really an evening place, like the cilantro taqueria, except on the weekends, you know? So it doesn't seem like there's much of a conflict there.
Anyone else?
I do. I have a question about parking. Have staff looked at the demand on parking in the morning and then the pickup in the afternoon? Just because it sort of seems like the Marx parking deck would be a little far away for little ones, but I just wanted to know if that's been looked at.
We haven't specifically, because it's in a general commercial district, they're not required to provide additional-
Additional parking.
Off-street parking. So the parallel on-street parking spaces would most likely, other than the Marx parking lot and the parking garage that are further, they'd most likely just use on-street parking.
Okay.
But we would encourage you to ask the-
Ask the applicant.
Are here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that we will do that. I live down the street, so I'm very familiar with the rush hour traffic through that intersection and so forth. So are there any other questions of staff? Jessica?
Follow-up to that, like with the Safe Streets study, if having Coventry previously being a school, if there's any available information that could support pedestrian safety at that area, or that could be discussed today, if known.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Do we know if there's been a study for, like, Safe Streets in that intersection of Euclid Heights and Coventry recently that may provide information on pedestrian safety?
I don't believe we've had one at that specific intersection, though.
I know myself, it's a very busy pedestrian intersection with a lot of people crossing in four different areas in there, and then there's a lot of drop-off and pickup activity that usually gets on later in the day with the restaurant there, and then the entertainment activity in the evening.
The morning probably shouldn't be too bad, but the afternoon, when more things are open, my guess is that there will not be on-street parking available for parents to be picking up their kids, so the parents will have to park and walk and bring their kids to some other location, whether it's the Marx lot or another lot, because I don't think they'll find on-street parking available.
No. There is excess parking, or at least available parking going up Coventry toward the library, and then up along that way, there's street parking on both sides that would probably come into play here, I would think, for pickups and walking over. Yeah.
So may I ask clarification? Then the parking directly in front of the property will be held specifically for those times? Because I know when I go to work and I go west on Euclid Heights, people are merging when there's parked vehicles-
Oh, yeah, it's difficult.
At that corner, it's pretty bad.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure if that's part of the application. I wasn't clear.
Yeah. Are you asking if there would be a designated drop-off spot?
Ensuring that there's not vehicles spilling past towards Coventry at Euclid Heights, where that merge area is.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you could accomplish that, but no.
Are you asking about, like, a designated spot for the school specifically?
And restricting parking, like, at that intersection where the merge would occur during those hours.
Okay. I know there is, there are some restrictions where there's no parking signs, but I know they won't have any designated parking spaces.
Most of the time, from my experience, those spaces are filled, and sometimes you'll even get a large vehicle, like if there's a band in town for a show at the grog shop or something like that, they'll have those things marked off, and so there's a lot of double parking-
Oh, yeah.
That occurs out front there.
I live just a couple blocks away, and when we are picking up something for a takeout at cilantro taqueria, almost everyone doing the takeout is temporarily parked in the street because there are no spaces available. I mean, that is the norm. Now, not early in the morning-
Yep.
But certainly, probably in the afternoon. So it's a tough spot. I guess one question would be, and this would be more to the applicant, as the school grows, is the intention to stay there or to find a bigger spot?
Let's, yeah, let's hold off on that until we bring the applicant up.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. Are there any other questions for staff before we proceed with the applicant? I see none, so if representatives from the applicant would like to move up to the podium and speak with us, after you're done, we'll have plenty of questions, I'm sure. Please identify yourself and your name and address, please.
I'm the founder and director of Forest City-
Bring it up a little higher. There you go.
There we go. Okay. Founder and director of Forest City Academy. So appreciate you guys considering this, taking the time tonight, and for the questions. Regarding the parking, a couple thoughts around that. It is designated as a loading zone, so the thought would be, particularly in the morning, but in the afternoon, that should be the case as well, that cars should not be parked there. So the idea being a family could come with their flashers, run their kid in, run them out, and proceed onward. That would be the intention around that. Robert, to your question, we are going to try to find a more permanent location as the school grows. Super grateful for the support of the theater and the team there to allow us to be there, but based off of the size of the location, that would not be a permanent spot. So that's gonna be an ongoing process as we're proceeding.
That's what I guess, but I wanted to hear-
Correct.
I have a question about, have you spoken to any of the restaurants? And frankly, I am thinking about cilantro, because they may have deliveries earlier than their opening hours. Have you talked to them just to see if there could be any even greater demand on that loading zone?
I have not. I will. The landlord for us is also the landlord for them as well, so we can get that conversation facilitated.
Okay. Yeah, most of my concerns were around the parking and how long, you know, because drop-offs and pickups can sometimes take a little longer, particularly in the afternoon. And even some folks might be later than what the identified drop-off or pickup time is. So, yeah, just mostly around parking.
Totally fair. I think as we are talking about having this stagger time, we're saying between 8:00 and 8:15, between 3:20 and 3:30. At this point, we're not saying last name A through J, attempt to be here within that more five-minute window, but if we did feel like there was an opportunity to better optimize the time and the space, we're certainly open to doing whatever we need to for that.
It's just such a busy, I know you live closer there, but I'm there a lot. But it's-
I have a question. Do you plan to have, like, a staff person out front directing traffic and helping kids get in and out?
Yes. My bright vest just came in today. Do have a portable stop and slow sign as well with that, but plan would be to always have a staff out to help both their cars proceed forward, help parents get their kid out, and keep that movement as efficiently as possible.
Well, the good news is you're not the first school to be in a busy urban area. So I think hopefully, you know, these things can be managed and worked out. We just have to be very conscious about public safety, and especially with the young children that are gonna be there, and hopefully always be accompanied by parents and guardians from the school to make sure they can get in and out very safely.
How many grades will be there to start?
So this year, we just have right now kindergarten and first grade.
Will you be, as time goes on, adding grades so the kids don't have to leave after first grade?
That would be the idea, adding through fifth grade, so adding a grade level each year.
So as you do expand and have more students, do you have any idea how long you could stay at this low location? It seems like that you could outgrow it pretty quickly.
We have our lease for the year there and don't think we will be there beyond that year.
Okay, well, that's important, because I could just see as this expands, the location really is problematic. You know, as the kids get older, they can go to the grog shop in the evening, and that's kidding.
Any other questions from my fellow commissioners? Jessica?
Specifically to entering and exiting vehicles, is there any thoughts around requiring that they only exit street-side and not exit curb-side, not street-side?
We would encourage the parents to do that, yes. I guess I can't require you to put, if you're in a booster seat or whatever, I can't require it to be on that side, but we would make that crystal clear as we're going through the parent expectations for pickup and drop-off, that have your child on the passenger side and get him out that door for safety.
Other questions for the applicant?
He may have answered this, but is this the first year of operation of the school?
This is.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anything else that you'd like to specifically tell us about the project? Information that we should know before we move to public comment?
No, I'm super grateful for you guys being open to this. I've worked in education since 2013 in various capacities, and for families who feel like I'm looking for something different for my child, want to just make sure that there is a viable, accessible option, I think from our target audience, it'll be families who feel like their child would be best served in a smaller environment. So that's what we're working towards offering for the families, and we're eager to take advantage of the neighborhood as we're able to. I'm grateful for the chance to be here tonight and for those who are supporting us.
One comment I'd like to add that I think is in favor of the location is its proximity to Peace Park kitty-corner across there. I just think is going to be a, there's tremendous synergy there of the location, you know, as long as we're very conscious of safety with the children crossing the street, and I'm sure everybody will be.
Definitely. We're eager to take advantage of that. Had an initial, just quick intro with the library the other day, and have a meeting with Ms. Kenny when she gets back from vacation as well, to just brainstorm on opportunities to collaborate. And I would say with us being a smaller school as well, that does give some flexibility. Where if they said, hey, there's some programming happening at Peace Park at this time, it'd be convenient if you guys didn't come then, or anything like that, we are able to be
Thank you very much. Any further questions of the applicant?
Not a question, but just noting, my silence in this is that I'm actually very familiar with this school. My wife has actually done some coaching, been the principal here, and worked with a few other people here as well, so.
I'm not gonna excuse you.
You know, one other quick question is just really of interest. Is there a certain educational philosophy of this school, like a Montessori school or any other educational philosophy that applies to this particular school that would differentiate it from other?
Yeah, great question. So two kind of big things I would say to that. One, we're very influenced by Montessori. We are not a Montessori school, so you will not see all the wood toys and like, things like that, but the idea of children being able to advance when they're ready, they can hold child, heavy on the hands-on, things like that, we take from there. And the academic approach is a mastery-based model, which basically means it's designed so kids are able to advance and progress when they are ready instead of at a set pace that the curriculum has. So that would be another differentiator on how we're approaching things.
Okay, if I'm reading the room right, four of you are here with the applicant, and there's one individual here from the public. Sir, would you like to make comments about this project? Okay, now, I just wanted to check and make sure that you weren't here to give some testimony to the commission about the validity or the value of this project, so thank you for coming. If there's no more testimony or questions of the applicant or staff, I think we can move to a motion, if anybody would like to make a motion regarding this project.
If I could just confirm a question with staff before we-
Oh, please, yes.
I've, for the staff recommendations, do we, were any other educational use properties reviewed when we created this specific list to ensure we're capturing standardly across?
Yeah, there was a case from 2012 and maybe like 2005, and I believe they only had the first two conditions listed, so I just added those at the bottom, but those are the only two for the previous similar cases.
Thanks.
Any further questions or comment before we go to a motion? All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion from any of you who would like to make a motion about approving this project.
I move that we accept the application of project number 25-18, Forest City Academy, for a conditional use permit, subject to the staff recommendations, which I believe there were no amendments, right?
There were not.
Okay.
Is there a second? Mr. Brown has seconded the motion. Let's take a roll call, please. Do we take a roll call on the vote?
You want to in this case, since we've got one commissioner.
I'm sorry?
You want to, because we have one commissioner who's not, probably.
I'm gonna-
You are gonna abstain? Okay.
Well, I'll start it off. Miles, yes?
Okay, gain your yes.
Brown, yes.
Wobig, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst ourselves?
Yeah, I just want to officially, I abstain.
Thank you. So we have four votes in favor. Is that enough to move forward and proceed? Okay, then the motion passes. You're free to go. You don't have to stay for our business. Thank you and welcome.
Best wishes to you.
Next on the agenda is old business. Is there anything that we need to talk about, Brooke? No old business. How about new business?
Yes, we have a few updates. We're gonna begin this discussion of the annual code review next month, so if you guys have any particular items you'd like us to look at, we'd love to hear that. And we intend to issue an RFP this fall to retain a consultant team for more significant zoning updates such as tiny homes, middle housing, and other housing types. And council had provided funding for this in our 2025 budget, so we were thinking of including a review of the places of worship legislation in that as well. And then auto uses will come to planning in October and November, and the new form-based zoning for Severant should be coming to Planning Commission in October as well.
Okay. Just a point on some dates. I think you'd put out a memo to us earlier, looking for some different dates for, was it September or October?
Yes.
Okay, have those been established?
Yes, I will email you to confirm them.
The reason I'm asking is I will be out of town for a month, starting September 12th through October 10th, so I'll probably miss the October meeting if the September meeting is still around the 10th, I'll be okay.
Okay.
Just so you know.
I'll confirm in the morning.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add?
Just a question around the, you said hiring consultant to look at the zone. Is the county planning commission, is that a potential source of contract for the code updates?
As far as, like, applicants?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the applicant list yet, but I know we got a lot of, like, 25 responses, so a lot of people are excited about it.
I was just thinking, because a lot of, I would think it would be similar, having the county planning commission do it. It could be good to have, since there are probably a lot of other municipalities within the county that are gonna be doing.
County planning staff has done work here in Cleveland Heights in the recent past.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
I did have one kind of follow-on to pedestrian safety and school zones. I've stated this before over the years, and I just feel really continually uncomfortable when reviewing our school areas because of the lack of planning documents and evidence that we get. So tonight was a little uncomfortable for me because-
The safety of the students, as they-
Just our understanding of traffic count and safe school zones across the city and the district. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, that it gets very uncomfortable. It may be needing appropriateness, but sort of that long-term planning and compounding of traffic and increased population and all that good stuff, I just don't, you know, I don't feel necessarily like the evidence we get works in decision-making.
Yeah, we can discuss that with planning staff.
Thank you.
So everybody knows, when the administration changes in the city, I will begin pushing again the new administration about the sidewalk that we, you know, because of the pedestrian fatality on Warrensville Road a couple of years ago, that fell to the wayside with all the calamity that ended up happening in our city government the last year.
I think I heard about that.
Yes, I think we all did.
That's a very heartfelt and valid point you made, Jessica and Mike. Thank you.
Yes, so, no, it's a genuine concern. I personally feel comfortable, and I've lived by the neighborhood, Bob, I know you have, for even more years than I have in terms of pedestrian safety there. Bob, I know you have for even more years than I have in terms of pedestrian safety there. And I can't think of an instance where we've had a pedestrian struck in that intersection in the time I've lived here. You know, versus Lee Road and Warrensville Road and some of the other corridors where it's much more problematic. But still, it's, you're introducing a large group of children into an area that's not used to having that at that time.
Parking is a real issue at that site.
Oh, yeah, right there.
The parking is really not there. A loading zone, people use that when they're loading their food from the restaurant into their car. You know, it's like, and then they have their flashes on. It's just spaces are just not available there most of the day.
And something's going on now where the whole, would it be the West Side Lane? All of those are out.
Oh, that's blocked until the road surface is finished.
Because we go to Cilantro once every couple of weeks at least, and it's different every time. But what we can rely on is that cars are, if not double parked, they're triple parked.
I know. I've never found the space on the street in front of Cilantro.
Not unless we go way far down. Now, it's a different time than their loading times. But even if I'm there in the day, there are a lot of little kids, groups of kids, that are in the park. But there's a lot of chaperones, and they take a long time to cross the street. So it still is an issue for me. I trust that they've gone through all the steps, but I can just imagine that it's going to be a lot more hectic and concerning than what's hoped for, certainly, but.
The applicant did say that they were looking for another.
Another location.
Wouldn't stay here. He said they have a one-year, they're one-year lease. I just can't see a school of any size staying in that location.
Yes.
It's not, the intent is actually the Baptist church, the Cedar Baptist Church right there, is what they were trying to, but I think there was a fire suppression issue that couldn't get remedied in time for the school year.
Cedar Road.
Cedar going, just kind of just going up.
They initially applied under that address, but they had to switch the location for that reason. So they planned to go.
Cedar was in the narrative.
Yeah, right. So they planned to go next year to Cedar if everything works out.
I know Artville has moved into a church. And, you know, there are churches available, and that could be a lot better location than the corner of Coventry and Cleveland Heights.
To clarify, were you, I guess, suggesting that every application come with a parking plan from now on? Or were you saying just for this particular?
That the evidence would be commensurate with the proposed application. So for example, traffic count, safety history, things like that to help fill in the blanks so that we're using more than our observed knowledge in making the decision. And the application was a little thin based on what they'd provided.
Especially when it's a very different new use. I mean, if one store closes and another store opens, the parking's going to be same as it always was. But this is a school. This is a different type of use than has been in this building. Now, of course, it was a church, but, and has been a church, but, you know, that's more on Sundays.
Yeah, and the traffic around there continues to evolve, just from my own observation. You know, as we've moved into an Uber-type society for food deliveries and DoorDash and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
That has created a lot of congestion there in front of a very busy restaurant that goes on all through their operating hours. As we drive home tonight, or I drive right by there, I'll see four cars double parked looking to do pickups and so forth. Now, granted, that's in the evening, it's not going to compete with the school, but it constantly changes and evolves. It doesn't stay static like it was there 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, or 30 years ago. And it's going to be different five years from now.
See that over by that Chipotle on Cedar and Surrey too? That is, that is one that is. And it is the food delivery.
That one is more so a drive-through than?
It isn't really, though. I would say the majority of what I see is people, it's either walk-up or it is like food delivery. People just parked along the street wherever they can.
There is a significant drive-up amount of business when I walk by there. It just depends on what time of the day you're going by there, where it kind of backs up into the street at times. Hasn't become a major issue, but there's a lot of activity that we didn't have there three, four years ago.
Yeah.
But these are all good points that we're raising, and I think that'll be a good part of our discussion for zoning code updates in terms of the kind of things that we want to make sure we're noting that Jessica's talking about that we really should get thought to in terms of, are we going to be more specific with an applicant like this in terms of, well, let's lay this plan out, who's going to be out there, how many people, what hours, and so forth.
Right.
But also, don't feel compelled to push a applicant forward if you don't feel right in your spirit. We could always, you know, take more time and come back. So I don't want you to feel like you have to or feel compelled, you know.
Actually, one question that we raised, you know, the applicant for the school said that they're looking after the first year to find a bigger space. Now, our approval really doesn't reference that. So if, for example, they continue to locate there and continue to grow, their presence there could become more and more problematic as they have more students and parents and teachers. But I guess, I mean, I assume that our approval is not limited by time in any way that we approved it. And if they triple and quadruple in size in the next few years, our approval doesn't go away.
So they applied for a 15-student school? So if they change the location or scale or capacity in any way, then they have to come back anyway?
That's significant. So actually, your application was for a 15-student school. So if it becomes a 45-student school, they would have to come back.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Whatever location, yeah, they would have to come back.
That helps, yeah.
There's a limit on how many people can even be there in the space.
Right, right. Yeah, thank you.
May I just offer this? I appreciate what you said, because, I'm not going to say I felt pressured to, because I didn't feel that way. But I did feel like, well, they've done this work, staff has worked with them. And fundamentally, I would never put a school there. But, and I understand it's almost like a stopgap to, because they didn't have the space that they wanted. But is there a way, like if we had a gas station that was using too many parking spaces for dilapidated cars, there'd be a way to monitor that, monitor that use of space and any violations of their permit? Oh, well, I'm just, as an example of a, of a, right, right. But we would be able to monitor if it's working, because we could see, oh, there's a. But if it's a school and they're experiencing growing pains and it is a problem with the parking, there's no real way for us to know that. So is there a way to?
Neighbors, right?
Neighbors, right. Complaints or observations? To help us develop some standards or principles of working with schools in congested urban environments, is there a way we can almost use them as a, I don't want to say guinea pig, but maybe that's sort of what I mean, yeah? To gather information, not in a punitive way, but just so that we're more informed next time, if there's a next time such an applicant would present. Because if there was adequate parking and it's not near a restaurant with a lot of Uber and delivery services popping up, and, because I was even thinking, oh, gosh, these little babies are so short. What if it's a crowded, because sometimes there are just masses of people there, and you're weaving through, and I was like, how would a little, little person weave through with a hairy parent? And, you know, there might be a kid in a car, you know? So I'm thinking through all that. But I didn't have the eloquence, maybe, to say it the way Jessica said it. So is there a way to sort of, I know it's not part of our approval, but to gather that information just through the relationship that is built and? Yeah.
In this case, I'm comforted by the fact that we approved a school for 15 students.
Yeah.
So if it stays here for even a couple additional years, it's going to have a lot more than 15 students that would have to come back. I would assume as that school grows, it's going to outgrow that space pretty quickly. And we would have problems, and we would have a reason to say, we can't approve you for an extension of the 15 months to, you know, to another year and two years, because it is causing a problem.
And we do have, if I remember, you know, I'm trying to think of the different locations, we have several small academies scattered about Cleveland Heights. I mean, this is not unique in any way, other than the fact that it's at a very busy intersection at Coventry and the library at the park.
Yeah, I mean, there are like historic prep schools that are in Cleveland Heights and Shakirites that are on big properties.
Oh, well, yeah, those are big schools. But I'm talking about small academies for children and daycares and things. We have them scattered. Yeah, we have them scattered all over, yeah.
Is this a charter school? Was it, it's, okay, it said private, I didn't know if that.
Yeah. So it's not a unique situation, I feel, other than the location, which, you know, really, we have to be sensitive to, and we have to kind of keep an eye on it. And I know I'll be counting kids when I drive by.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess just kind of to close, if possible, to communicate to like the city's communications department, if there's opportunity to promote that there's a new school, this location, reminder for public safety, and grabbing that kind of an opportunity, I think, would be helpful.
That's actually what I meant to ask, and I'm sorry. Would they have signs, or would the city do signs where, you know, like you see different gentle warnings, like children crossing or, I mean, something like that to sort of alert people?
They have not applied for any signage, but I can see if there's, if there will be any like city signage.
That would be in the public right of way, so that wouldn't be something they apply for. That'd be something that the city would decide to do, like you're saying, as a public, you know, as a public safety measure.
Yeah. There are pedestrian, typical, standard pedestrian crosswalk signs all through that neighborhood. They're all, yeah, not anything that I can think of that pictures little children, especially since Coventry School hasn't been.
Hasn't been there for a while, yeah.
Those are good points. Any other comments? Well, being no comments and no further business, I think it's time to adjourn. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, sir.